Okay, welcome back, everyone. Let's resume the special meeting. The closed session report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I would like to report that the city did enter into a settlement agreement which resulted in a stipulated judgment in the action of California Housing Defense Fund versus City of Cupertino. That judgment was entered January 8th, and it has resolved that matter.
Thank you very much. Moving along, ceremonial items. Madam City Clerk?
No, Mayor.
There are no ceremonial items. Any postponements and orders of the day?
Mayor, do you have any verbal recognition?
I do, I do.
No postponement, thank you.
Okay, so the next item is oral communications, and this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including informational items. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes. I wanted to start off and take a minute to honor one of our previous mayors. Sadly, last year, the City of Cupertino lost a lifelong resident, National Guardsman, council member, and former mayor, Mr. William Reed Sparks. We will adjourn today's council meeting in his honor. William Reed Sparks served on the Cupertino City Council for several years and was as mayor from 1974 to '75, '81 to '82, and 1986 to 1987. During that time, the new library was expanding, and so was the Walco Shopping Mall. During his tenure, the transportation corridor for the California State Route 85 through Cupertino, as well as the site modifications for Apple's first campus in the city, were approved. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Reed Sparks enjoyed playing basketball, cheering for his daughter's softball team, and especially ballroom dancing with his wife of 40 years, Joan. We are honored to have the Sparks family represented by Joan tonight, and as we remember and celebrate Mr. Sparks' dedication to the Cupertino community. May his legacy live on, and his spirit forever reside in the heart of Cupertino. And thank you so much, Joan, for attending this evening's meeting. Okay. You didn't want to speak, did you?
No, thank you.
Moving on to the consent calendar. Madam City Manager?
Mayor, I think we're on oral communications.
Oh, yes, of course. All right, any speakers?
Yes, Mayor, I have five speaker cards requesting to speak in Community Hall, and I see one hand raised on Zoom.
Okay.
So just a reminder, if you wish to speak on this item, please have your card submitted or your hand raised on Zoom in the next nine minutes, and you will have three minutes to speak. We will start with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Angela. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I have been privy, for the last seven years, to something that is taking over my state and apparently my country. I was sitting here the first night, I think it was in 2017, when we heard that the first housing bills had been signed by Jerry Brown. And then after that, Gavin Newsom took over. And after seven years, we have a boatload of housing bills. Not once has the public been able to say anything about them. With the passage of SB 423, we have gone into a totalitarian regime. I'm very familiar with this because my mother's home, as is another relatives, are in the Coastal Commission, actually at Rio Del Mar Beach, where the president and the governor were six months ago. SB 423 is so insidious that it is actually not just a coastal commission breaker, as we thought it was. I spent hours talking to the Board of Supervisors in Santa Cruz, Monterey. My mother has one of the ladies as one of her Board of Supervisors for Santa Cruz County. We thought this bill was about the coastal commission, but it's not. They're trying to break San Francisco. And this is no way, this is an abuse of bill production, and this is not the way the state legislation is supposed to happen. I have been reading the articles in Forty Eight Hills and the Chronicle about what has been happening to San Francisco, HCD's abuse of the city, expedited, and I am appalled. I don't fully understand what was going on. I think that everyone needs to educate themselves and read Forty Eight Hills. It is a nonprofit. Hopefully, they are writing articles that are unbiased and true. My mother-in-law lived in San Francisco for many years. My husband has a stepmother and a mother-in-law, a mother. And I'm familiar, right now, the Marina is supposed to go to 100 feet. This is ridiculous. It's on fill. In 1989, that area was destabilized by the Loma Prieta earthquake. I beg you to read the Forty Eight Hills, draw your own conclusion.
Thank you, Jennifer, that is your time. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Angela, followed by Rhonda Frye. Welcome, Peggy.
I have slides.
Yes, just, yes, you can place them there.
Good evening, Mayor, whoops. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, City Council members, staff, and most of all, the public, and also the council. Here, I'm asking everyone to read Chapter Two, Goals, Policies, and Strategies of the November 30th Housing Element Draft. The link is here, and this is Chapter Two. It's 51 pages. The entire document can be overwhelming when you look at it. Just go to Chapter Two and start there. I want to draw your attention to page H16 and 17, Strategy HE 1.3.6. This is it, but the translation is, "Every single-family home located on a corner lot all across Cupertino can become apartments. If they use density bonus, the height, setback, and parking restrictions can and will be waived." Here, page H17, Strategy HE 1.3.6, these are the words, but it translates to, "Every single-family home located behind or around a shopping center or commercial lot can become apartments. If they use density bonus, the height, setback, and parking restrictions can and will be waived." It mentions arterials and major collectors. These are the roads. If your property touches any of these, you can be watching apartments, you can become apartments. Do you want to know what the extent is? This is the zoning map for Cupertino. You can't read it, but basically, look at the color. Cream is single-family homes. So what I've just read involves all these homes. These two strategies, as examples, had no public discussion at all, no planning commission discussion, no housing commission discussion, no council discussion, no discussion, no public awareness, nothing. They're just in the draft. Please read, please. You have time before it shows up on an agenda. I will read it. Those of you who can, send emails. These are the emails here. Chapter Two, please, take a look. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Angela, followed by Rhonda Frye, followed by Jay Wong. Welcome, Angela.
Hi, City Council members. My name is Angela. On November 26, my dog and I were walking at Jolly Men Park. We only live two blocks away. My dog was on a leash and sniffed the grass by the restrooms. An off-leash dog and a Kita mix charged over and instantly grabbed my dog by the neck, dragged her away, and shakes her. I started kicking and becoming violent towards the dog, but it wouldn't let go of my dog. My hand got bit in the process as well. The owners did not do anything to help. No one in the crowded park helped. I was hysterical, screaming, crying, shouting. My dog released her bowels during the attack. I didn't know if my dog would survive. When the dog finally let go, my dog was in an incredible amount of pain. I had to pry information off the owner of the dog. They didn't see what they did wrong. I saw the owner have fresh blood on their hands, too. I rushed to Medved Emergency in Mountain View, too, where they found four punctures in my dog's neck. The bite was 6.5 inches from top to bottom canine on her 11-inch neck. The reason my dog survived is because I went on the ground and held her body so the aggressive dog could freely ragdoll her. I am beside myself every day as she did not deserve this extremely painful mauling. I developed PTSD, and my life has forever changed by this violent event. The regulars of Jolly Men Dola used the entire park, parking lots, playgrounds, streets, and sidewalks as Dola. They do not use the specified area and do not recall their dogs. They let their dogs just run around the entirety of Jolly Men. I have seen this every day since 2022, before the incident happened, since I live so close. Dogs have always come up to us on the sidewalk, on leashed. This has clearly been unsafe, as I've seen dogs running and knocking kids over in the grass in the past. And on my birthday, my dog and I became victims of a dog attack. Dola in Jolly Men Park has become completely out of control, and the people of this area are not ready for Dola, as do they not respect the rules? Animal Control has even told me having off-leash dogs with no fencing is a bad idea, hence why their city, San Jose, always has fences. Fences contain the dogs, and those who do not wish to be trampled or attacked are protected from accidents. Nothing has been done since the attack. Dogs are still running all over in the place, and in December, my mother's leash dog was charged at by two unleashed large dogs. Please read the comments on my next-door post I sent over email. Multiple people with service dogs avoid this park because of this issue. Multiple people do not feel safe with uncontrollable large dogs running all over. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Next, we have Rhonda Frye, followed by Jay Wong, followed by Louise Sedati. Welcome, Rhonda.
Hi, good evening again. I was just shocked by the presentation that Peggy gave just now. And also, it just seems so incongruous to be talking about Reed Sparks this evening and seeing this in our housing element. How did it get there? Reed Sparks was really, was all about community, and I think that's something that we really need to remember and why we're here. So, I'd also, I'd like to know, when will we hear about any status of the CDTFA appeal? Has the city hired an outside attorney? And with respect to the budget, I'd like to talk a little bit about the budget communication. I'd like to really see things tightened up a little bit. As I spoke earlier this evening, we're hearing about that we have a $30 million sales tax deficit. The thing is, is that right around 2018, 19, our net sales tax revenue was 25 million. So, having a $30 million deficit on 25 million is just not, it's not realistic. We got, we got a whole lot of money, more money than we expected to before. So, you know, please, just be straight with us. And on to that, I want to talk a little about the proposal for a parcel tax. I got the business, the business survey that was sent out, and it talked only about the flat parcel tax. And also, the presentation here talked about how, well, we could do a graduated tax where residents get $27, and it attacks, and then it would be much higher for larger parcels, multifamily offices. So, but you know what? If we have $250 flat tax for everybody, including residents, it's pretty much the same for the city, but not the residents. $27 for residents is not $250, and if you don't think that $250 is a lot of money every year, then you don't know your community. Now, on to the sales tax. Y'all were asked to evaluate different types of taxes to raise money for the city. One of the things I found is that the city had already hired a company to promote the sales tax idea before y'all, before we all had an opinion on it. And that's not okay. That's putting in cart before the horse. And I'm not, I'm not happy about that. Looking further into the finances on the Treasury reports, we're not getting all the information that we need. And in fact, the craziest thing is, one of the bank accounts still has Zach Karak as the recipient. That gentleman has not been employed by the city for years. We need to get our finances in order. How are you going to get us to say, let's tax ourselves, if you don't have your ducks lined up? Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. And next, we have Jay Wong, followed by Louise Sedati, followed by Sandana Seba. Welcome.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. And I think I don't need to talk as much, and I think the council member knows some of the background of the property belonging gone, again, again. And we actually don't ask much, and we just want to put this on the agenda to discuss about it. So, long ago, we had to move on, and I guess the city wants to. And we already say we don't really believe that much justice in the society. So, I put this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Louise Sedati, followed by Sandana Seba. Welcome, Louise.
Hello. I'm Louise Sedati, resident of Cupertino for 34 years. I'm also the main leader for the DOLAS. The DOLAS started organizing way back in 2017, and became, Jolly Men Dola became a legal Dola, well, it had its trial starting in 2019, and it became a legal Dola in, I think, about 2021. And now, we also have Linda Vista Dola that started in 2023. And we have lots and lots of videos, lots and lots of data that we have collected throughout all these years. And we also have recent photos that show dogs playing happily, standing happily, at Jolly Men Park, and without any incident. However, there was one incident in November 26, where an unleashed dog that was not part of the Dola, not a regular member of the Dola, bit this young lady's dog that was leashed on the pathway. And I believe that, as you can see, stitches weren't required, and we at the Dola had a big post saying that, does anybody know this owner of this dog that was aggressive? Because if we see this person, we need to tell them that aggressive dogs are not allowed on the Dola. That's against the Dola rules. So, and the report came back from everybody that they had not seen this person before. So, this person with the dog has not come back to Dola. The person did give the insurance information to this young lady to have her vet fees paid. And the Dola people are being, have been very respectful, and they were not, she has made some allegations about the Dola people not trying to restrain their dogs. And the Dola people have been restraining their dogs. So, I would like the council to just take and balance our history since 2017 and all the data, the voluminous data, where we had day-by-day photos and data sent to you, to stand by how good we are.
Thank you, Louise, that is your time. Next, we have Sandana Seba will be our final speaker in Community Hall before we move to Zoom, where we have two hands raised. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Sandana Seba. I'm a resident of Cupertino, and I am a senior at Lindbrook High School, and I'm here to talk about Items 11 and 12 on the agenda. So...
Excuse me. These are comments for items not on the agenda. So when we get to 11 and 12, did you say?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll get to that, and you can make your comments at that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was my mistake, Mayor. I apologize. So, we have two hands raised on Zoom, Lisa Warren and Sam R. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Still, it works to make this fast, but now I have to talk about the Dola incident. When I was a young teenager, I was taking our family's new dog, puppy, to training class by a dog breeder. And the breed that the dog bred, that breeder bred, was different than the breed of my dog, and then most of the dogs were that breed. I won't mention the breed. However, one of the classes, we were circling, doing our thing, and one of the breeder's dogs, actually, who had been owned by the owner for close to a year and was in training classes, the dog stopped, turned, and went for its owner's neck. I was traumatized. It was crazy, and I didn't hear a comment about being sorry about what this young woman has gone through with her dog. So I will tell you, I'm sorry that happened. And I, I don't know how I feel about the DOLAS, but I just know that not all dogs are consistently well-behaved. Things trigger them, just like people. So, I don't really need to say anything more, and I wasn't going, didn't know I was going to say anything about this at all. What I do want to quickly comment on before I go back to work is that, in November, the City Council had a workshop, a governance workshop, which was a requirement to have before December, so that certain members on council might get, or had the ability to get their committee positions back. And so, I attended that, and there was a lot of back and forths and good conversation, and a vocalized desire by some to continue the conversation in an Okay, Hrurra Brown Act way about certain things and maybe some new things that might come up. I don't believe that any of that has been done yet, and I think it's really critical that it is done, because I don't feel like any of the messages, this was to be able to communicate not just among themselves, but also with the city staff appropriately, and what the city staff expected, what council expected, blah, blah, blah. But I haven't seen any improvement, really, and in fact, I've seen public attacks in writing on individual people. And I just think you people up there, all of you, need to revisit what you were supposed to be taught.
Thank you, Lisa. That is your time. And our final speaker on Zoom is Sam R. Welcome, Sam.
Evening, Mayor Sheila Mohan and City Council. I want to express my opposition to Dola. The previous speaker, Angela, has shared with you a very traumatic incident. I have personally witnessed two large white dogs charge a young child at Monovista Park, and there is only, it takes only one such incident to create trauma that lasts a lifetime, and injuries that last a lifetime. It is not the well-trained dog owners and dogs that are the problem, but it is that single, excited dog or untrained dog, and there is no way to know that until it's too late. And so, I ask that you please exercise responsibility on this matter and cancel the Dola. I understand that this is the creation of a past council, and request you to please do the right thing for safety of our residents. We cannot have unenclosed DOLAS, and we don't have the budget to start investing in Dola enclosures at a time when the city is cutting budgets. I also want to ask that you please have code enforcement take an active role in this area. Anytime this is brought up to code enforcement, they redirect the matter to the sheriffs, and the sheriffs redirect the matter to the animal control. And so, this is really, you know, you're left with nobody taking accountability for any incident that happens. So I request you to please, at a time of budget shortfalls, this would not be a bad area, to have code enforcement active. If you might shut down Dola, that would provide safety for all residents. Finally, I want to bring to your attention the issue of the unhoused person by Target on Stevens Creek Boulevard and Speedway. As you know, it's been over three months that the individual has been there, and I hope you can work with county resources to get him to a more humane location and also clean up that encampment. And I hope you're taking an active role in partnering with any resources in the county to take care of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sam. And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you. Thank you for, to everyone who participated in the oral comments section. We will move on with the agenda. The consent calendar is next. Madam City Manager, are there any items that have been pulled from the consent calendar?
I don't have any. No, Mayor? I have not been notified by any council members to pull any items off of consent.
Excellent. Okay, so are there any public comments on any items that are staying on the consent calendar?
Mayor, I have one card from Jennifer Griffin. And I believe there's one additional card. Jennifer, would you, would you like to speak on Item 5?
Yes.
Okay. Now's your time. Now's your time. No, you're providing comments, it has not been pulled for discussion by any council members. And Mayor, currently, there are no hands on Zoom raised for this side.
Yeah, that was, that one got changed. Oh, my God. Okay, so, this, Item 5 was about the committee assignments, I believe, and I'm, one of my items wound up on there. And I, I'm going to reiterate that I really, really hope that we're having equitable commission and committee assignments now. It's been a long time. I have not been convinced that anyone did anything wrong, and it's time to restore committees and commissions. Because I feel like what happened in the last year, the public has not been allowed, we have been discouraged from voicing our opinions. And I feel that, based on what HCD has been doing with the housing element, that HCD was the one that told the city that they had to get rid of the Environmental Review Committee, the Design Review Committee, and the Legislative Review Committee, which we have suffered from. If we're going to have builders remedy, it sounds like that Cupertino is a sitting duck for builders remedy. There's no environmental review, no architectural review. We need these committees back. Okay, well, evidently, they got thrown to the wind because HCD dictated they were gone. Evidently, in other cities, they have thrown out the Design Review Committee, too. This has been verified. This has been verified across the state. HCD is basically dictating what happens in each city. But I feel that HCD is trying to thwart the public from any input. HCD is an out of control state agency that has, needs to be reined in. How they do it, I don't know. I don't know who gives them the budget. I, I'm personally wondering, have they exceeded their budget? Who's, you should not have a public agency doing things like this, threatening cities. But I would really think that if we're going to be sitting ducks for builders remedy, which is, it sounds like we are, that we need our environmental review committee. We need our design review committee. And believe me, we would not be in half of the trouble if we had our legislative review committee. I have had to spend hours of my life researching things that my city was doing for the last two years. So let's have equity on our committees. I'm still concerned that right after we had new people come into the city council in January of last year, the next month, we canned three longstanding committees. Okay, what does the public draw from that?
Thank you, Jennifer, that is your time.
Please.
And our final speaker is Peggy Griffin for items seven and eight.
Good evening again, Mayor Mohan and council members and staff. I just want to point out that the, that the treasures reports, I know, it's only counts payables. Count payables, one month is late and it's due to the cancellation of the second city council meeting in December. And this was not the first time this happened throughout last year. I want to encourage you to do everything you can to not cancel your meetings. If you do cancel, please find another alternate date so that the material can be covered. It impacts the next meeting and causes us more material to cover, less time to cover it. So please avoid cancellations, thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, no more requests to speak on this item?
Okay. Thank you to the speakers who spoke on the consent calendar. Can we get a motion to approve the consent calendar as is items two through nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Please vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, let's move to the public hearings.
Yes, Mayor, I have a presentation. Let me just queue it up really quickly.
Mayor, would you like to introduce the items?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're on item number 10, public hearing on the abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of the Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter 9.08 and Resolution Number 23-117. We'll wait for the.
Okay, yes, I jumped the gun a little, so yes. I believe you can see my screen. Okay, so thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members. This is, we are at the start of the weed abatement program cycle. The Cupertino Weed Abatement Program is in place to prevent fire hazards posed by vegetative growth and combustible materials, commonly known as weeds and other items. The program is managed by the Santa Clara County Department of Agriculture and our City Municipal Code Section 9.08 requires property owners to remove or destroy weeds. And compliance is required annually by April 30. And they, they also need to be maintained throughout the year. So properties that fail to clear their, their weeds are added to the program. The properties remain in the program for three years. And if they're found to be hazard free for three consecutive years, then they are removed from the program. The county provided a report to the city of all non-compliant properties. This was on November 7th. Council adopted the resolution accepting these, this report. Owner responsibilities include maintaining the minimum fire safety standards. These are mailed out to all homeowners in the program. The vegetation height must not exceed six inches. This includes roadways and driveways. Homeowners are expected to clear vegetation 30 feet from structure, any structures, clear combustible debris, clear under the eaves of houses, clear their roof and gutters, and trim tree branches 10 feet from their chimney. Here's a photo of a non-compliant property and then after photo where it has, is now compliant. Also, here is a vacant parcel before and after. So abatement options include the homeowner actually completing the work themselves. If they do not complete the work, then the county will authorize a contractor to complete the work for them and the charges will appear on the next property tax bill. The, the parcels in the program are monitored year round. The inspections begin after April 30th. Every property in the program receives an initial inspection by the county. All properties are charged a $96 inspection fee. This fee covers the county costs of servicing the property. I will mention that the weed abatement program is 100% cost recovery. So that is why the county charges these fees. In November, the, the council approved service level reductions, including defunding the weed abatement program subsidy of $8,600 annually. In previous years, the, this county administrative fee was waived for any properties that abated before the April 30 deadline. However, the city will no longer cover these costs. The notice of the public hearing as well as the requirement for the, for the homeowners to abate by the April 30 deadline was mailed out by the county on November 29th. The city sent a similar letter on December 21st, reminding the homeowners to abate and maintain year round. Also included in this letter was a notification of the administrative fees associated with, the changes associated with the service level reductions. And so tonight, the action before you is to conduct the hearing for any impacted property owners that would like to contest this matter of proposed abatement and the, adopt the Resolution Number 24-010 ordering the abatement of public nuisance from weeds or other fire hazards pursuant to the provisions of the City Code, Chapter 9.08 and Resolution Number 23-117. And Mo Cumory, who is our Weed Abatement Program Manager, he is on Zoom to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let me bring it back to the council. Do we have any technical questions or points of clarification from the staff? Seeing none, let's go to public comments. Any public comments about the weed abatement issue?
Yes, Mayor, so I have two speaker cards for people requesting to speak in-house on this item. And I see no hands raised on Zoom currently. So Jennifer Mank and Zari Wong. Is Jen, is Jennifer available? Okay. Yes, please come to the podium and you have three minutes to address the council, thank you.
Actually, and I'm from the 20950 Stevens Creek Boulevard. It's at the cross street of the Hopeu. And that's in Sumitson, the Boba Shop. But actually, I received the, the notice to say I have the weed abaments, the notice, because the landlord got very upset, you know, so. And I take some picture for that. Actually, that part is, 99% is concrete. It's like the, you know, parking lot and also the business. So I, I don't know why we are on the list. So, and I already been take care of all the weed on the side. And so I can show you the picture, is it able to show the picture?
Yes, you should just put, yes, there you go.
Culture? Okay, so this is the only that we have the weed. I think that we already cleaned up already. And this one, same thing, it's just outside the property. Yeah, so we were cleaning up already. And also same thing, like the hair. And then actually, the most is the property is, is a parking lot. Yeah, so it's a parking lot. So actually, we don't have that much, you know, the space for the weed. Okay, and I just want to know how to get rid of the, you know, our name from the list, so.
So Mayor, I believe Mo may be able to speak to this parcel request?
Yeah, and the parcel number is 35907006. It's a 20950 Stevens Creek Boulevard. It's across the street of the Hopeu.
Okay. Mo, are you familiar with this property?
Actually, I am, I'm looking at it on my screen right now. The property was inspected, was seen on June 9th by my inspector and seen that it had high grass and weeds. If you'd like, I can share my screen and you can see these pictures.
Yes, please, yes, Mayor.
So most is, is a parking space, actually. Yeah, I would say the 90, probably 95%, 99%. So, yeah, you can see that most is a.
Can you see my screen now?
Oh, you mean that one?
Yes.
That's why you take a picture that time?
This was when the picture was taken in June.
Oh, that's just outside the property. But it's still, because of the, we find now for the, okay, let me see here. That's a, okay. So this, yeah, I think that we cleaned up already, so about a couple of months ago. And we clean up every month right now, so. So before I didn't know, is that's just our property line, so, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for that or?
There are other pictures showing the grasses along the fence line, close to the building, in the parking strips.
Oh, yeah, we cleaned up already, yeah.
Okay, the property was, the property was looked at on June 9th. It was not compliant at that time. The property owner was sent an ad letter informing them that the property was not compliant, that would be added to the program and that we would be monitoring it for three years to ensure that the compliance continues. Where the grass is here, next to a wooden fence and next to a building, and then even in the parking strip close to where vehicles and trees are, does pose a significant fire risk. And we believe it should be kept on the program until it demonstrates three consecutive years of voluntary compliance.
Okay, so, so you mean that we have, we take care every, every month? And then we're going to take out the, our name from the list, right?
A property that goes on the list as an ad would remain on the list until it demonstrates three consecutive years of voluntary compliance. Meaning that it is, we never fail it, it passes every inspection, always has grass maintained at six inches or less. And we don't have any of these conditions that pose a fire risk.
Uh huh, okay, so.
Thank you, that is your time and the council will discuss this further when they deliberate.
Sure, okay, thank you.
And next we have Jerry Wong. Welcome.
Yeah, my name is Zari Kun Huang and I'm the owner of the 891 South Ten Tao Avenue. And I've been a resident for quite some time, well, since 1997. Let me give you some of the picture, this is the weed abatement things that were the, cleaning up everything. I don't know that what needs to be done. I hope that my name can be removed from the list. So I don't know, that person can show what, what I've done before? Oh, my APN number is 37538044, 37538044.
So, yes, I have this, I'm going to go ahead and share it, give me just a moment. Okay, this property was seen on June 12th and it does have grass over the six inches throughout the yard and the parking strip that poses a fire risk. And it's within 30, of course, within 30 feet of the house. It was added last year, the property owner has not been assessed any fees at this point. This would be the first year of the property officially being in the program.
Yeah, yeah, but I already cleaned up everything that, that could be a fire hazard. So it's all in a good shape. I, I've been a resident for, since 1997, so it's been so long. I never have a problem with weed things. But last year, my wife was very seriously sick. So that could be the reason I didn't take good care of it. And now it's all been done, so I don't, I hope that you guys can consider to remove me off the list.
Mo, do you have any further comments?
I, I've given you the details, I don't have any comments. We don't, we don't, from this office, believe that it would be appropriate to remove, but that's of course not my decision to make.
You have 23 seconds left, sir, would you like to make any other comments?
No, just I hope that you guys can consider me to remove me off the list, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Yeah, you look at it, it's all clean.
Okay, thank you, and that is your time. The council will now discuss. So Mayor, that was, those are the only two requests. Oh, however, I do see one hand raised on Zoom. And so I will call on that person, if that's okay. Ramya Krishnan, welcome.
Hi, thank you, everyone. Our house is 10365 Sterling Boulevard. And this was in construction, so we tore down our house and we did a complete rebuilding of the site. And there were a couple of plants that had overgrown, but all those have been removed and we have been, we have done the landscape for the city plan submission. And those have been approved by the city planning team. So I would like for our home to be removed from this because we have rainwater consistent or the planting that is done. We have mulch all over and we usually take good care of our lot. So the overgrowth happened because of the construction. So I would like to request the council to consider and remove our address from this list. Thank you.
On this property in a situation where the property owner has done construction and some landscaping, we would need to go look at the property. But if it is built in landscape sufficient to remove the hazard, we would remove them from the list automatically. So we'll definitely take a look at that regardless of what the decision here is. And if it's sufficiently built in landscape, it would be removed as a matter of apartment policy.
Oh, awesome, thank you so much.
So Mayor, I believe that concludes the public comment portion.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. Okay, so let's bring it back to council. Let me suggest that we go with the motion and then go into discussions after we oppose the motion. So the motion would be the, is there a motion?
I'll offer a motion for the sake of discussion that we adopt resolution number twenty-four dash zero one zero, ordering abatement of public nuisance from weeds and other fire hazards pursuant to provisions of Cupertino Municipal Code, Chapter nine dot zero eight, and resolution number twenty-three dash one one seven.
Okay, is there a second?
A second now.
Okay, so the motion was by Vice Mayor Fruen and seconded by Councilmember Wei. Discussions. Any discussions? Councilmember Chow?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to remove the two properties from the gentleman in the audience and the one that's calling from the phone. I think we should trust our residents. If they have done, cleaned it up, let's trust them. Yeah.
Is that something you'd have to?
No, I think that the procedure here would be to ask the movant and the second if they would accept the amendment. I think as a general matter of horizontal equity and the equal application of the law, given what we've done here in the past, that I would not accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. Any, so that doesn't go anywhere. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I was wondering if Mo could talk about properties we have removed from the list in the past. Because I know that we have had some discussion and deliberated on some of the reasonings that we were, we were told for why things happened. And if you can recall, some of the, some of these past projects, I would appreciate hearing from you or from city staff. Thank you.
I certainly can give some information. During the COVID crisis, there were some people that came and really felt that they couldn't go outside and do the work. And there was some confusion on that. And so the council did dismiss some of those properties from the list. And that was, of course, that was an appropriate action based on what was, the council felt was, was the right thing to do. Anytime that you feel that what we did was improper or we were overzealous, those would be reasons certainly to say that you don't think we should keep those properties on. In these cases, I believe that our inspectors acted appropriately from what they saw from a public right of way. Of course, if we ever do anything wrong, a property should automatically be removed. But in these cases, we haven't done that. Everything, all inspections and such were done from a private, from a public right of way, not from private spaces. So, yeah, it's, it's if you think anything was maybe overzealous or if there is some mitigating circumstance in the eyes of the council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Chow?
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that. Oh, sorry. I'd like to clarify the legal procedure here. This item is on the council because the council has the authority to remove properties from the list, right?
Yes.
And I think in terms of equity, we have people who have, who took the initiative to come and attend the meeting. And then they have taken the initiative to clean up the property. I think as a government that serves the people, we do have the authority. And I think we should trust our residents and allow them to be removed at this time. And of course, if next year, the property really is not complying, they will be back on the list. So I think this is equitable and reasonable for our residents. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I had a question for Mo. I thought I heard you say that even if the problem was taken care of, the names of the property owners would still stay on the list for three years?
Yes, the property was seen to be noncompliant at the time of the inspection, which was in June, which is well within, after the April thirtieth deadline. So because we have this long process, we have to go through the hearings and all of that. When we see a property in June that's noncompliant, we have to wait until now to officially add it to the program because you have to have the right, and they have to have the right to go to you to say, we don't think we should be there. Anytime a property goes on the program and gets approved to be on the list, it would require either, like we said about the third speaker, to show built-in landscape or have three consecutive years of voluntary compliance, then it would come off the list automatically.
Okay, so my understanding is that if they remove the weeds this one time, it would still stay on the list until they complied for three consecutive years?
Yes, if we inspect it this year and it's in compliance, it would still be on the program, even though it's no longer, it's not a hazard today. It was, in this case, in June of twenty twenty-three.
June of twenty twenty-six?
No, in the case, it was noncompliant in June of twenty-three. So it's on the list until June of twenty-six, yes. Or until the end of the season of the twenty-six season, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Councilmember Chow?
I'd like to make a substitute motion to see if we might have a majority that would give, I think we have the authority here. And this is what exactly this process is for, is for the council to make the decision. Otherwise, this won't even need to be on the council agenda. This could be on the council agenda. Public hearing is exactly what this process is for. And why, if someone has already complied, why risk putting them on the list for three years? Why don't we waive it for this year? This gives them a warning. And I trust that their words spoken here. So I hope that I have support of my council members.
So is there a motion here?
Yeah, this is a motion for the staff recommendation and, but remove the two properties. I mentioned earlier, one from the gentleman and the other from the one from the phone call.
Go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
I just want to clarify which properties. Is that the eight ninety-one South Tantao and then the one under construction? Or was it to the two zero nine five zero Stevens Creek Boulevard plus eight ninety-one South Tantao?
I'm not exactly sure the address. What's the?
The commercial building was two zero nine five zero?
Not the commercial building.
Okay, so you're looking at eight ninety-one South Tantao, okay? And then the other one was the property under construction. Prior to supporting that, I want to understand something. We're mentioning, this is a question from Mo, we're mentioning this April date. So that would mean, okay, so I want to understand this timeline. So there was, there would have been a complaint that came in in April of last year. And then you go out and you do your inspection and you've got inspection dates of June ninth for one, June twelfth for another. And I cannot recall the last one of the Sterling Boulevard one. I don't know what month you went out.
I believe that was also in June.
Also in June, okay. So they, they were given, the homeowner would have been given a notice?
Yes.
Prior to, okay, so some.
Not prior to us coming out.
Okay.
To explain how this works, this is a case where we were inspecting these areas, properties within these areas. And my inspector saw the properties that were noncompliant because they were looking at another property close by. So they took pictures, sent the property owner a letter telling them they were in noncompliance. And then informing them that we would be going through this process with the public hearings. The third party, the one that was under construction, that one I'm going to be looking at. And if it is built in landscape to the level that the person stated, it would be removed simply because it's built in landscape and there is no, it's a waste of time for us to inspect later in the year.
Okay, pardon. And through.
They would pay no fees for that.
Okay, I understood. And through the, through the mayor, did the, the staff member who was out doing an inspection, was that in April? Or?
They, no, that was at the June date, June ninth and June twelfth, the dates they were in that neighborhood looking at those properties.
Okay.
They were also looking at the active properties on the list.
Okay, so there wasn't, there was no April first warning and then, and then they came out to do a visual in June. That was, they were out in June and saw it. Okay, all right, thank you. With that, I will second Councilmember Chow's motion to remove eight ninety-one and one zero three six five. And also for the, for the council members, you can get a sense of the history of the landscape upkeep through Street View on Google. So you can just pull this up and take a look and it'll put the date on there. So you can see kind of how things have progressed. All right, thank you.
So let's take a vote. Oh, Councilmember Wei, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. So question for Mo, this is not on a complaint basis, right? This is an annual inspection from the County of Santa Clara.
Well, it's, oh, we do answer complaints and go out and look at properties specifically because either a public official, your code enforcement, or any member of the public contacted us to say there's a problem. But we're also in your community annually looking at properties that are on the list that you approve, which takes us through so much of the city that we see most every property. And it is our instruction, if we see a property that's out of compliance, especially significantly out of compliance, that we take photographs and send the property owner a notice and then go through this process.
Okay, and so on your annual inspection, when you see things, you take pictures, you put on the dates, and you put them on the list and send the owner a letter. And that stays, property stays for three years, no matter whether they, they cleaned it up this year or that. And this is a pretty routine process, as I see it.
And it's done through twelve jurisdictions in the county.
And we go through this every year. I am sympathetic for, you know, people on the list. And but if I understand it correctly, if almost, if fifty percent of the people on the list come to the council and say, I cleaned it up, can you put me off it? I would think, I would agree with Vice Mayor Fruen. It is actually not equitable. And I understand the reasons why we're doing this hearing. Because I remember you have taken or we have taken people off the list for specific mistakes or things that does not really, you know, on the, but not because I've never, for four years on council, I've never taken, or if I remember clearly, taken property off the list because it's been cleaned up this year. And I remember all the properties stayed for three years, whether it's been cleaned up, the first year, second year, thirty or not. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I am really would love to grant it. But what I'm afraid is we open up a public hearing protocol so for people to come and say, I cleaned it up, put me off the list. We are going to really have to take a look at the council's hearing process. And are we here to listen to each case that's being cleaned up and taking me off it? How do we decide whether we take this off, whether we take that off? And I really want to say the commercial property on Sun, this Mr. Sun? And she also cleaned it up. And we're saying that we're not going to give her clearings and we're going to give the other two residences. So I'm a little confused on our process. If we grant this, where do we go? And I really want to ask Mo's professional advice, how we proceed.
Well, my professional advice, I've been doing this for the county for eighteen years now. And it's been a pretty consistent program that's worked very well to ensure that property owners maintain their property for making, keeping them on for three years. We found that if we drop them early and the hazard was still, would still be there, then we find that they repeat offend. They're more likely to not if we make them do it for three years. Then they usually can come off and stay off, usually forever, but some reoffend years later. So I would say keep them on the program and allow us to do our job and make sure that the properties are maintained over that three-year period.
Thank you, Mo. I don't have any more questions. Mayor Mohan?
Thank you. Vice Mayor Fruen?
So I just want to thank Mo for elaborating sort of on why the program lasts for three years. I was going to ask a clarifying question on that point. But in general, I think that if we are going to make exceptions, they should either be for an obvious error on the part of the program folks who run it or some sort of very unique hardship. And I don't really see any of that here today. I hear a lot of contrition. I appreciate that. I know it's embarrassing to be on the list. But I think that in terms of the even application of these rules, that it would be inappropriate to remove anyone today, at least based upon what I've heard.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Chow?
What legal implication, my understanding is we have the legal authority today to remove properties. That's the authority given to the council by this statute which established the program. And I think the intent of the program is not to punish people. The intent of the program is to warn people of fire hazards so that they are complying willingly. So removing a couple of properties, I think goes a long ways the intent of the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
So I really appreciate getting to hear the advice from Mo. While I, while I will, you know, keep my second on the item, I'm not going to be supporting it.
Okay.
Yeah, I had one comment. It seems like, you know, I appreciate the time and effort that it took for the property owners to come and plead their case tonight. But there seems to be a well-defined process that's there, which has worked very well for many years. And keeping the property free of weeds for three years, that is the process. And, you know, the property owners need to know that if they keep it clean for three years, they do come off the list. So I don't see a reason to make any changes to that well-defined process, as I see it. So coming back to the motion, Councilmember Chow, you had a motion and Councilmember Moore, you seconded it. Should we go ahead and vote by lights?
To clarify, council is voting on the substitute motion.
Yes, that is, it is a substitute motion. We are voting. Hang on. Councilmember Wei, last comment.
I believe I have a minute to speak a little bit more. I do understand the council has the authority to, you know, to excuse either one or two or three of the people who really come here. Appreciate you coming here. I appreciate you've done the work already. But I really want to define that the county's process is very proven and it's being done year after year. What I'm afraid is if we open up this, council can accept any authority and we are going to have this regular hearing and a proven process every year we're going to have. This year is three, maybe next year will be ten. And so I, this is a difficult decision. But I am going to say that I really believe that the council authority needs to follow the state, the.
believe that the council authority needs to follow the state, the law, so that we are doing things according to, um, the practices. If we want to change this, we can ask the county to change, hey, every property that's done before August, before, um, this certain time, we can take them off. I really want to, that to be a process. So I am going to, um, apologize ahead of time that I think a proven process cannot be changed just because the council has authority to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Wei. Uh, council member Chow, last comment.
Can I ask the city attorney to clarify our authority here today?
Um, I, I would recommend that council make, uh, findings based on the facts that are presented in evidence and determine whether a, uh, it, the properties in question present a public nuisance. Um, if council believes that the evidence presented shows that the properties prevented a public nuisance and meet the criteria for, uh, participating in the program, I think, um, it would be appropriate for them to vote to have the, uh, properties participate in the program. Ultimately, it's council's discretion to make those findings.
So it's the council discretion and we are not going beyond our legal authority or risk, put us in any legal risk?
Uh, a- again, I mean, I, I, I won't speculate on the legal risk, I would just say that, that, you know, I, I would recommend that council make findings based on the evidence before it.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to vote, uh, by lights on this, uh, council member Chow's, um, motion, which is to, uh, uh, take the two, um, property owners who spoke today, uh, to take their properties off the list, uh, for the weeds and the public nuisance that they create. And there is a second, pardon?
Yes.
This is the substitute motion. And there is a second by, uh, council member, um, Moore. Let's vote by lights.
The substitute motion fails with Chow voting yes.
Okay. Uh, we still have the original motion. Uh, and the original motion is the, the staff recommendation. Is that correct? Uh, we had, um, the motion proposed by Vice Mayor Frun. We had a second, so let's vote by lights on the first original, uh, motion, which is to accept the staff recommendation.
The main motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We are moving on. Item number eleven, which is to, uh, which is an application for a seven-unit town home development and associated environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. Application numbers DP two zero two-three dash zero zero one, ASA two zero two-three dash zero zero two, TM dash two zero two-three dash zero zero one, and TR dash two zero two-three dash zero zero eight. Applicants are Leon Hugh of Top Mission Realty and Investment Incorporated. Location, ten forty-six Bianchi Way. Uh, the APN is three five nine dash oh seven dash oh two one. Do we have a staff report?
We do, thank you.
Mayor Mohan? Uh, I'd recommend that council members make any, uh, disclosure of ex parte, uh, communications they may have had prior to opening the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, uh, Mr. City Attorney. Are there any ex parte, uh, communications that we have to disclose? Okay, so seeing none, we'll move on to the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the introduction. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Ben Foo, Director of Community Development. With me tonight is Danielle Condit, Associate Planner with our department and the project manager for this proposal. Tonight, we have a very brief presentation for you, and we're highlighting some, uh, items from the staff report, which provides, uh, the, uh, project in a much greater detail. First slide here is the project location. Uh, it showcases the location of the project. Obviously, you have, um, to the north Stevens Creek Boulevard, it's part of the site near the intersection of Stevens Creek and Still, uh, Stilling. Across the street is, uh, commercial, uh, property to the, uh, as to the west and to the east is the, is a church. To the south is, immediately to the south is a parking lot that accommodates, um, the apartments further south, and you see more residential duplex apartment, um, layouts to the south and the southwest of the property. This is a, a site plan, just to orient ourselves. And in the staff report as well as the presentation today, we'll talk about building A versus building B. Building A is the, uh, building that faces, uh, the church or the rear of the property. Building B is a front building faces Bianchi Way. This is, uh, aerial view, showing you the existing condition, also a two-building configuration as, similar to what's being proposed. The project also has, uh, the applicant has requested six waivers as part of density bo- density bonus projects, and these are also discussed in details in the staff report. We'll go over them very quickly here, what they are. First is the front, the setback requirements, where the front and the rear, front setback requirement, the minimum is twenty feet. The project proposes six feet for, uh, the second floor and nine feet for the, um, first and third floors. Rear setback minimum forty-five feet and is proposed for fifteen on the ground floor, fifteen on third floor, and twelve on the second floor. Site setbacks, minimum fifteen feet, project proposed ten feet on both sides. It's also a building design, uh, the building design, uh, criteria here, and that is intended for, uh, the heart of city districts, properties that butts up against residential properties to have that sort of step-down effect to accommodate residential, uh, structures. This faces the church site, so it doesn't have that relationship there. The, uh, requirement for second story is twenty-eight and a half feet, third story is forty-five feet, proposal is ten feet, as shown in the hashed area. Next, we have common open space waiver. Uh, the project does not propose to provide any, and, uh, service access waiver also not provided, services will be provided on Bianchi Way, similar to other properties, uh, currently on the pro- on the, uh, on the street. There's also a parking reduction as part of the state, uh, state law require, uh, requirement that allows density bonus project to apply for a different standard. So as you can see in the table here, we have a typical parking requirement standard for twenty, but for density bonus projects, for this particular project, it's eleven. The project proposed fourteen, which exceeds the basic requirement for density bonus, but less than our standard, the MUNICO requirement. Project also has a incentive, the waivers and incentives, a little bit different waivers is basically a deviation from the code requirement from the objective standards, incentives or concessions are, uh, more, uh, financial-based. So in this case, they are proposing to remove tree number nine as part of the tree removal process. The next, uh, diagram shows replacement, a project proposed to remove ten trees and replace ten other trees, um, also three additional street trees on the left side of this diagram here will be installed by the, the applicant as well. This, uh, slide shows just the architectural design of the structure. It shows a variation in planes for the three stories, also changing materials. There's a ground floor stoop for the three units facing Bianchi Way to provide that access and connection off the street. Environment review, project is exempt, uh, due to, uh, according to CEQA for infill develop- infill development projects. So our recommendation, recommended actions, similar to what's being, uh, indicated in the staff report and also in the agenda, is to find a project exempt and also approve, uh, the permits that's being submitted. I should note that planning commission, on December twelfth hearing, uh, on the project, approved the project on a three-one vote to adopt resolutions and recommend that a council approve the project as proposed. The next steps, if council were to approve this project after a ten-day reckon reconsideration period, the applicant can then submit a building permits for demolition, grading, and construction. So before I conclude my, uh, presentation, the staff also received some public comments, which we, uh, coordinated with, uh, the, the resident directly, and those are, um, clarification on the level of affordability for the BMR unit, and also the compliance, the bird safe and dark sky requirements. So with that, I will conclude my presentation. I know the, the, uh, project sponsor applicants here as well, and it also has a, a presentation for you, and we're here for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director. And is the applicant here?
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, my name is Mike Wilson here on behalf of Leon Hugh, uh, with the Bianchi Way Town Home Project, uh, complex. Thank you, uh, staff members for providing a, a pretty clear and cut, uh, concise idea of the development that we're, we're interested in putting in. Um, during the planning and commission, uh, the planning, uh, commission meeting, there was a couple of items that were raised in regards to the parking, um, and also in regards to the property line and the tree along the, the church parking, um, to which we've made concessions and we've been able to, uh, procure a couple of parkings, uh, at the acupuncture to the north of the new property. Um, and then also the additional street parking gives us seven additional parking spaces, not including the seven that we have that are, that are two per unit. So there's fourteen total spaces that we have currently. Um, our privacy concern, we believe with the trees that we're replanting, the ten that we removed, the ten that we replant, plus the three additional on the street side as was, was mentioned, um, provide an accurate, uh, due to height of the actual tree as it's in fully growth, uh, in comparison to the height of the building, we believe that we've met that privacy concern. Um, with commercial construction being, uh, or commercial properties rather, being on the east, north, and west of the new development, um, the south, as was stated, is, is two layers or two rows of covered parking, and then the residential is, is much further down south from that point. Um, I don't know if this is the proper time to bring up the fact that, uh, the Director of Operations and the trustee from the church are here. Um, there was a, a comment that was brought up. We've had a discussion. I don't know if this would be a good time to bring them up to, to have that sort of discussion here.
Sure, let's go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Dez Metcalf, and I turned in an email this afternoon, which you forwarded to Mike. We had several concerns, mainly being the property line. Um, we felt that where our parking lot is now, at the parking line, our, our actual property line is several feet over that, and that was an agreement that happened twenty years ago, um, between the property owners, um, to build a straight line to avoid the tree that's in question now. After talking with Mike and, uh, the developers here, I've looked at their blueprints, um, we are still going to have a land surveyor come out next week to make sure that their diagram and blueprints are correct. And if so, they are correct, and then they're willing to move the fence back to the correct property line, we're not in opposition to that, nor removing the tree if the trees they're going to replant. Um, those were our main concerns, was just the property line, as I said in the letter to you all, um, today. Uh, and then, of course, um, we talked about the tenant and final map, which we're not opposed to. So with that said, I think that's, that's all we had. A lot of things were cleared up last Friday night. There was a meeting that we had, um, and we talked for quite a while. And then this evening in the foyer, we've discussed things. So if everything that they have is correct and what our land surveyors do, um, and we can move the property line back and they're in agreement with that, then we're not opposed to anything.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Council.
We'd also like to offer the concession in regards to the fence that's currently in place. Um, I don't know if, if there's a, a, a site plan that we can show, but the fence as it currently sits is proud of the property line towards the church. And in reality, that property line brings it back closer towards the developments. That's that skewed sort of fence line that Dez was confirmed, wants to confirm. We've confirmed with our drawings, we are pushing that fence line back to its proper location of the property line, which then creates additional, not additional, but the original square footage of their parking lot. Speaking with the owner, Leon Hugh, we'd like to make the concession that once that new fence is put into place, we will repair and patch in the asphalt at that parking lot where that old fence used to sit to make it back to usable space for them. So we'd like to make that as well.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Well, let's bring it back to the council and any questions of the applicant or, or Vice Mayor Frun?
So to staff, I, I realize that this application has activated the density bonus law, they're allowed to, um, employ waivers with regard to any standard that would physically preclude the, uh, the project. Would the proposed resolution of this property line dispute create any issue for you going through the rest of the permitting process? Or do you, do you need us to make any findings to help you enable that solution?
I, I don't believe it would, uh, hamper our, our process. The process still continues, obviously. If there's new information that comes, uh, from the project with the, the stamp and sign licensed, uh, surveyor that proves the location of fence to be elsewhere, we'll, we'll make those changes, um, through the building permit approval process. But it doesn't, it won't stop us from continuing the process.
Got it. Would, I, I just want to make sure that you don't have to come back to us.
No, we do not need to come back to you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, council member Wei?
Okay, so I just want to, um, confirm two things. One is, um, it looks like the, um, uh, your, sort of the letter we see from Union Church is okay right now. You have reached an agreement and you are, now, I'm so glad we have friendly neighbors that talk to each other. So I want to make sure that is fine, because that was actually my concern, my question. My second one is on you, when you mentioned you have secured two extra parking agreement with the occupant, acupuncture?
Correct.
Place, um, is that you, with the tenant or with the owner? Probably the tenant, right?
With, with the tenant or the owner of the, of the parcel.
Oh, okay.
So that, I believe, which is also the tenant.
Okay, and then there is five street parking, so?
So, I, um, the current count, uh, it, it's, it's, it's out of my mind right now, and I apologize, I can't recall, but I can say that we've secured four spaces within the acupuncture.
Mm-hmm.
And then by the new development, it creates three additional spaces, uh, guest parking spaces along Bianchi.
Okay.
So a tot- total of seven additional.
Right, so all your units have two, two park, two car garages?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so for the residents, probably, they can probably put their cars in the garage. These are more concerned with guests, you know, visiting. So four for the acupuncture place and then five street parking.
Three, three additional in, in comparison to what's currently in place now.
Okay, okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Council member Chow?
Um, so from the staff report, I understand this project is eligible for density bonus law, but I can't find where it's specified, why it's eligible? Because my understanding is you need to provide more units than it's zoned for, but the property is zoned for up to nine units, and the project has only seven units, so it's less than it was zoned for. So why, has the law changed?
I, I'll answer that question. It's, it's, it's a housing development project that provides a requisite level of affordability on-site, um, so therefore it is entitled to, um, incentives and, and waivers as allowed by the density bonus law. It is at the election of the developer whether to take the bonus to allow to, for the additional units.
So they don't have to provide, because I thought the law is meant to incentivize more units, so they don't have to provide more units? And then, but they get to have six waivers? How many concessions?
So the law, the law, the law is, I agree, part of the law is to incentivize more units. Um, the other part is to incentivize the development of affordable units, but the way that the law is written and interpreted, if you provide those affordable units, you are eligible to the, um, incentives and waivers as allowed under, the number of incentives is based on the number of units and unlimited number of waivers.
So the six waivers is a lot? And then, so the developer is supposed to prove that you cannot physically fit seven units on the property? However, the site is zoned for nine units with setbacks in our general plan. So I assume when the city zone the property, we, we understand that the property can accommodate up to nine units. So how come the property now cannot accommodate seven units even with the, the, while complying with the general plan? Because the general plan allows nine units.
So the, the, yes.
It, it doesn't make sense.
So the legal standard is not whether the project can fit the number of units. The question is, is whether the project as designed can accommodate the number of units. The case law interpreting the density bonus law gives broad discretion to developers to design projects in the way that they see fit, and it's not necessarily, the fact that there's an alternative design that might fit within the existing development envelope does not mean that the developer cannot take advantage of waivers to development standards.
The current state law means if I were developer, I am designing a project rather than building 200, 2,000 square foot more affordable housing, I could choose to build 4,000 or 6,000 square foot units that I design. And as a result, in order to build the project I designed, I get to claim a lot, unlimited number of waivers. That's the current state law, right?
So that specific example has not come before the courts. The examples that have come before the courts have involved amenities and, you know, building amenities, making, allowing room for building amenities and allowing a density bonus waiver to accommodate those amenities, you know, along with the additional density. Also allowing for, you know, mixed non-residential uses and additional density to accommodate those uses.
Yeah, I understand.
So the specific example that you've cited has not come before the courts, but the general principle that's come out of those cases is that.
That's okay. I have limited time. So what's the average square footage for the seven units?
So it's a little over 2,000 per square unit, not including the garage space. So about 2,500 per unit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you. So looking at the project data, I'm trying to kind of understand how this plan came about, the configuration of it. Okay, so you were allowed 45 feet because it's heart of the city. That was what was allowed, but you're only proposing 30. So if I'm understanding correctly, some of the reasons why you would need, the need to eliminate the open spaces to have the number of units that you're wanting to have in this development fit while staying under a 30-foot height. But it actually seems like you could, if you went to the, you could, you would start with a 45-foot height requirement. You can ask for a waiver and go higher. Ordinarily, that's what we're seeing with these density bonus projects, like Westport and Valco use density bonus law as well. So what was the decision to not go to the 45 and then ask for a waiver?
Sorry, ma'am. I didn't mean to speak when you were still mentioning your question. But if I may, I believe that the overall idea of the 30-foot mark, anything up and above that 30 to 35 feet requires a certain width of street on Bianchi Way. So if we had a wider street and/or the ability to bring a fire engine or fire truck to within the property with their outrigger set out, it would require quite a bit of a big different development for the entire property. Currently, as it sits right now, 30 is about the maximum height that we can get, plus the parapet at the top of the roof, without having to try to widen the street to be able to bring a fire apparatus down the street. Now, if I can invite Larry Wang, our architect, he was on this project, it's his design and his drawings. He may be able to answer that with a little more clarity, to my understanding, other than my understanding.
And through the mayor, if staff can also fill us in on this as well, about the street widening part. Thank you.
So the reason behind that 30 feet is actually a comment from fire departments. There is no enough with fire access to support the project to go that height. So if Bianchi was a little wider, that allows the turnaround, that we could potentially go a little higher. But that is actually the comment from the fire department, that we had to stay below 30 feet.
Thank you, Larry. I will say that we wanted to go higher, a little bit higher, to make each floor of each section of unit a little taller ceilings, but we were unable to.
Okay, thank you, because I figured there was something about this. Okay. And would staff like to, through the mayor, add in on that?
Sure, through the mayor. So the street is being widened a little bit. I think currently is 22 feet going to 40. There's also some dedication apart of the street from the developer to accommodate new and much better improved sidewalk configuration. But in terms of further widening, that would require some reconfiguration of the site and the property.
Okay, thank you. And just, it is my preference, I understand you have these constraints for this, but it's my preference that when density bonus law is being invoked, that the developers would really maximize those units. And don't leave any on the table, but I can see what the situation was here, and I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Any other? Yes, so, Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. I think I have a couple of minutes to ask questions. So I want to ask our staff. So there is really nothing in this project that the council has a reason to say, has, not reason, in fact, options or authorities to deny it.
Well, there are a number of findings. So for each one, it's part of their findings in the resolution. We'll have to justify those findings. So if the council wished to deny a mafia project in a certain way, we'll have to look at those findings, see how we can justify that.
My second question is as to the density bonus. If I understand it correctly, it's actually to provide more low-income housing, but the bonus is they could also build more market rate housing to build more money, to make more money, you know, more units to make more money. If I recall correctly, the Westport is the same situation. They use the density bonus, but they did not build more market rate housing. And there's reasons why you're not doing it, or why Westport is not doing it. Am I recalling correctly? I didn't approve the Westport, but that's what my impression is.
Yeah, I think that's a fair response, assessment.
More questions? Vice Mayor, please.
Is there a minimum density on this parcel?
The minimum density on this parcel is nine units.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any from the council. Go ahead.
So the minimum density is nine units, and this is not, only seven units, so it's lower than the minimum?
To clarify, the maximum density on this site is nine units.
Not minimum?
Correct.
Okay. But just to clarify, in case there is a minimum unit requirement, I think we, in the housing element, we are putting in minimum unit requirement. In case someone needs to build less units, less than the minimum, it's still allowed, right? They can take waiver for that requirement.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question again?
In case there is a mini, in case, I know it's not the case here, but in case nine units is the minimum requirement, developer who would like to develop only seven units can still use a waiver to not comply with that minimum requirement, right?
Sir, the mayor, so I would rather take that hypothetical question with city attorney and get back to the council.
Okay.
Okay, Vice Mayor, please.
So for clarification, what is the minimum density on this parcel?
25 dwellings per acre.
Okay. Is that the maximum density or the minimum density?
That is the maximum density.
No, what is the minimum density on this site? The answer may be zero. I don't believe there's a minimum density.
Yeah, I don't think there's a minimum.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
The concerns that the church representative had, are you saying that there's still something pending, that there is a survey that needs to be done before you, there's a meeting of the minds?
So great question. We did provide a survey to the city through a licensed, excuse me, through our civil engineer. We did provide that to the city with the property line established. I believe what the church is doing next week is they're going to have their own survey out to come out and take a look at the property line to make sure that we're apples to apples in regards to where that property line sits, from our drawings to theirs. And then, once that's established, because there's only one property line that we could follow, I think both surveyors will find that same conclusion. And from that point, there's no other issues pending. The only thing that would take place is the fence would move along with the development, creating that, I don't want to call it additional, but returning back that square footage of strip that's been sort of consumed by the existing parcel, back to the church's property. And then Mr. Hugh said, we can actually go ahead and redo the asphalt in that section to put it back to its original state.
And the tree removal won't be impacted?
The tree is going to be removed, correct? Yes, with the replanting of 10 plus three additional trees.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
All right, thank you, Bill.
We may get you back on to comment.
I'm here, I'm here all night.
Okay, so let's go to public comments. Any comments from the public on this matter?
Yes, Mayor, I have seven speaker cards for people requesting to speak in Community Hall, and I see five hands currently raised on Zoom. So our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by, so Dez Metcalf, do you still need to provide comments? Yes, okay. So Jennifer Griffin, Dez Metcalf, and Lynn Carlton. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin. This is a very interesting street. If you all weren't aware, there is a apartment complex, home apartments, where there are people who have, I say, physical challenges live. Because one of the ladies that I used to babysit lives there, she is legally blind, and she's lived there for many years. It's interesting to see that Bianchi is probably an older street. It's been there a long time. Bianchi is one of the pioneer families in the area. My husband actually had a Miss Bianchi as one of his teachers in elementary school. I'm glad to see that this height is being kept at 30 feet. We don't know with the housing element what's going to happen. You could, I'm assuming, because of Buffy Wicks, we could have all sorts of interesting housing on church sites. With Union Church, I don't think that will happen because they've been there for many, many years. And their primary concern is their group of people that worship at the church. I hope that the tree that's being taken down is not an oak tree. If it is, then I do think they need to make sure that they replace it. When we were having the discussion about people not maintaining their sidewalks, it made me think of my young friend who lives there, who is a limited sight, and she does walk in the area. If sidewalks are not maintained, there will be accidents. And I think that this is all the more when we have new construction of seven new homes, 2,000 square feet. That's enough to have a family home with children in it. We need to make sure that we don't have street trees cut down or maintained in strange fashions by owners, that we maintain the beauty of Cupertino and the rule of law in the city, which is to maintain the street trees and maintain the sidewalks, or you will have accidents and lawsuits against the city. I'm also concerned about the parking situation. It appears that the developer is very responsible and understands the parking constraints. I don't agree with the state laws, and I've never been allowed to voice my opinions because nobody in the state who writes these awful housing laws cares about the public. Cupertino has a parking standard, and we need to maintain it. That's why we live here. Good luck to this project.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time. You're now muted. Your time has elapsed. Please respect the set time limit. Thank you. Now we have Dez Metcalf, followed by Lynn Carlton, followed by Sandana Seba.
Hi, thank you once again. The question as far as the markers on the property line, our surveyor will be there next week. I'm not sure what day they're going to be, but as soon as they are there, if everything's confirmed by their blueprints and our surveyor, then as far as we're concerned, everything will be fine with that. And then I'll get ahold of Mike and Mr. Wilson and his team, and then they can go forward with the project as far as we're concerned. The tree that's involved that we talked about that's in between the property line is actually destroying our parking lot. It's continually having to be repaired. It's not on any sidewalk. It's between the church's property, who I represent, and their property. That's the only thing there. And I understand it as their arborist has said, and I've read their reports, about any trimming of the roots, the way they grow, it's going to damage the tree either way it happens. And that's what we have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dez. Now we have Lynn Carlton, followed by Sandana Seba, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Lynn.
Hi, my name's Lynn Carlton. I'm a resident of Bianchi Way, have been for 38 years. We have some concerns because a lot of us disabled, especially the wheelchair users, don't use the sidewalk because it deviates. And they are going to straighten it to a certain point, and then it's going to deviate again, and everybody's going to go out into the street because it's a lot easier than doing a Z in your chair. The other is, what is going to happen to the eight low-income two children, people who live on that current property now? They're all scared because they can't afford anything more than what they're paying. So has anybody considered what's going to happen to the current residents of this property? Are they going to be relocated with compensation? Or are they just going to be dumped out on the streets like so many other people in this valley? You know, we have a responsibility when we develop to make sure that the people that are there previously are safe, safely housed and comfortable. And I'm very concerned. The other environmental concern I have is we have a lot of, you wouldn't think it, but we have a lot of wildlife on that street. I have possum and raccoon, and there's a lot of squirrels. The hawk has driven away the crows, so we don't worry about the crows. But has anybody considered the animals and the other people impacted by this destruction and then rebuild, which they cannot afford? They cannot afford it. They're scared, and they don't like to know where they're going to go and what's going to happen to them. That's about all I have to say. But I do hold the city and the developer and anybody else responsible for any harm that comes to our residents on that street because it's going to be way too much traffic, too many cars, too many people. Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Next we have Sandana Seba, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord. Welcome, Sandana.
Hi, my name is Sandana Seba. I'm a resident of Cupertino, and I'm a senior at Lindbrook High School. I'm also a member of Cupertino for All and Catalyze SV. And during November, I attended Catalyze Silicon Valley's developer awards. And the people I talked to there said there's like a lack of like housing development in Cupertino. And that's why I fervently support item 11. I think this will bring more affordable housing to Cupertino and address the statewide housing crisis. And this development is also in compliance with the objective zoning and general use plan. And moreover, it's a multifamily housing development, which is sustainable and efficient use of land compared to single-family developments. Additionally, this project would bring tax revenue to the city without impacting its budget. And yeah, thank you for your time and consideration. Please approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandana. Next we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I'm glad that the property owner and the church has resolved the boundary line, or hopefully. hopefully, it's been resolved. Um, at the planning commission meeting, I didn't realize that in front of this development, there's supposed to be three street parking spaces. If you could just confirm that. Three plus the four at the acupuncture would be seven. Um, also, if you look at the sidewalk, many people have said it, it's scary. If I was in a wheelchair, I would not want to be on that sidewalk. It's narrow. And then that sharp turn, if you can do anything to cause it to curve, to make it more wheel- chair accessible, um, something, and also wider. And also consider the parking spaces, the existing ones in front of the, um, housing development at the end of the cul-de-sac, allowing them some spaces of permit parking to guarantee that they have a place if they have to get, park a van and get out of a wheelchair. Anyway, consider some of these. I know you can't do the other stuff. And as far as affordable housing, you just heard it from the man before me, that this complex is providing one affordable housing, but it's kicking out two families. So, it is not bringing more affordable housing. It's just bringing more housing. I'm not against housing, but I just want affordable, where people can actually live. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Louise Sadadi.
Good evening, once again, uh, Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I urge council to approve this project. It's exactly the type of housing that's needed in our city, the missing middle, not single-family homes out in the suburbs. I attended the planning commission meeting where this was approved. It's clear that it is a conforming project. Our city has a poor reputation for housing builders. Approval of this project sends a signal that projects can actually be approved in Cupertino. It's also a signal to HCD that Cupertino is serious about housing. So I urge you to unanimously approve this project tonight.
Thank you, Jean. And our final speaker in Community Hall is Louise Sadadi. Welcome, Louise.
Good evening again. So, um, somebody made a comment to me, I've, I'm becoming a fixture here. So, isn't that like a lamppost? So, I will be short and to the point. I think this is terrific that, um, the, the developer, um, uh, is going to put, uh, seven townhomes, and, uh, there was a lot of work done by the city staff, um, making sure that, uh, the appropriate requirements were met and the appropriate waivers were applied for. And, uh, it would be, uh, really wonderful if, uh, we can show that our city can work in a collaborative manner with the developer that's, uh, helping our city move forward with smart development. We cannot freeze our city, uh, in the state it was in the 1960s, when it only had single-family homes. Uh, we need to move forward. Um, other cities like, uh, Sunnyvale and San Jose, they've moved forward, added housing, uh, and meanwhile, uh, Cupertino has really lost revenue. Uh, so this will help with our tax, our somewhat, our, some of our tax. It will help to bring younger people, uh, people in, rather than people that bought into the area in the 1980s, when it was more affordable. Uh, so, uh, kudos, uh, to, to the developer and to the city staff for all the work that they've done. And I really would love if all of the council could agree to this, to show that Cupertino is serious about smart development and, uh, opening the city to younger people and people who, um, are not the most wealthy. Okay? So, and that there is one, I, I understand that one unit is below market. So, uh, we have to start the process somewhere, and we can criticize and not get anything done, uh, or we can approve this project and show that we can move forward and be a collaborative city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Louise. And we have six hands that has, uh, there, have their hands raised on Zoom. Kamya Bmasian, Eva Chow, and Jennifer Sharon are first. Welcome, Kamya.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I urge you to approve the resolution as proposed. This is a good project, adding much-needed density to the Stevens Creek Corridor. It will be close to amenities like supermarkets, schools, and parks. As you all know, there's a severe housing shortage in Cupertino. Addressing that shortage will require many projects like this one. I ask that you give this project the green light. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamya. Next, we have Eva Chow, followed by Jennifer Sharon. Welcome, Eva.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mohan and council members. My name is Eva Chow. I am a schoolteacher and also a CUSB board member. Tonight, I am speaking on my own behalf. I am glad to hear that the developers of this project are working with its neighbors to resolve its, uh, property line, um, issues, and I am speaking in favor of this development because our city needs to have growth. Our city has been declining enrollment at the schools. Um, there has been multiple reasons of declining birth rate, and also, a lot of people have moved up because it is not affordable. Given the fact only one of the seven units are below market rate, it is a place where we can start. I hope in the future that we will have more housing opportunities in which, uh, there are more, uh, below-market-rate available housing. We need to be able to offer affordable housing because we need to allow, uh, young families to s- to be able to move in our area and start a family. With each of the residential units being around 2,000 square footage, uh, not including the garage, is a very sizable amount of living space that not only allows, um, either a couple to start a family, but could be, uh, multiple people, uh, families, um, living together, um, communal housing probably. But it's really great to share this project and, and allows our city to either stabilize and continue to be alive by having more people come into our city. So, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eva. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Shivani Kay, followed by Harry Neal. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening again, council members and Mayor Mohan and city staff. I'm Jennifer Sharon, and I am speaking tonight only on behalf of myself. I'll be very short. I ask tonight that you approve the application for the townhome development as recommended by the planning commission and city staff. Cupertino needs more housing, and this is another step in that direction, in a great location, near transit, shopping, and services. This is a good project. Let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Shivani Kay, followed by Harry Neal, followed by Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Shivani.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor, the council, and staff. I urge you all to approve this resolution as proposed tonight. I originally had a lot of data and facts and statements about how this is already compliant and how multiple stakeholders have told you tonight repeatedly that they've all been involved and that this is going to be a net positive in terms of, of housing for Cupertino. But then I was also really moved by, by the woman who, who spoke about the accessibility issue. And I urge you all to think about what we heard tonight. You heard that it already is not functioning as disability accessible. You've heard that the tree is consistently breaking up the concrete, that the sidewalk is in dire need of repair. If you all vote in favor of this tonight, you will have a real opportunity to make sure that we can make it more disability accessible and have more affordable housing units. There's a lot of buzzwords that you all hear tonight, like housing density, housing density, housing density. But I wanted to just talk about my experience growing up in Cupertino in an apartment. To me, housing density meant knowing my neighbors, knowing that Vishala Auntie lived over here, and my friends Anshuman and Avi lived like a hop and a skip away in that direction. To me, density meant that my mom trusted me, when the clock hit four and I finished my homework, to walk a couple feet and then play with all the people in my apartment. Kids don't have that really anymore in Cupertino. We need more communities. We need to know our neighbors. And what we need to stop doing are asking irrelevant, confusing questions that, that make this seem like there's some false equivalence here. There isn't, this is a both-and type of situation. Yes, we need more disability-friendly housing, and yes, we need more affordable housing in Cupertino. So, please don't be tricked into thinking that some of these problems are why we shouldn't move forward with this proposal. You have the power to be change-makers in many different facets, and you can explore all of them. So please, I urge you once again, as someone who is desperate to see more kids, know what it's like to live in a neighborhood with friends and stores nearby, and, and guardians, and we just, we don't have that, and it's miserable. So, next time you hear housing density, I hope to God you, you really seriously consider approving it, because Cupertino is in dire need of more communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Shivani. Next, we have Harry Neal, followed by Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Harry.
Hi, uh, my name is Harry Neal. Uh, I'm a local, um, advocate and student at Deansha College, uh, and, uh, given the neighborhood that the, um, proposed, uh, townhome project is in, um, with, uh, fantastic access to, uh, various different amenities, uh, like cafes, grocery stores, education, uh, and, uh, parks as well, I see no reason, uh, to not approve, uh, such a, a project. If anything, uh, really, I think it could be even denser considering, uh, that Deansha acts as a trans- uh, a transit hub, uh, and it's right next to, uh, I think it supports, uh, four or five different bus lines that, uh, take you just about, uh, anywhere, plus or minus a transfer or two. Um, again, I think there's no reason not to approve, uh, this project. Uh, I think more housing brings, uh, an untold number of benefits, uh, especially when it is, uh, in an area that supports people, uh, being able to ditch their cars for even just one or two, uh, trips out of the week. Uh, thank you, and, uh, I hope you take the considerations of the various public commenters to heart.
Thank you, Harry. And our final speaker on Zoom with their hand raised within the set time limit is Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruen, City Council members and staff.
My name is Glenn Fishler. I'm a longtime Cupertino city resident, and I'm speaking to you tonight, representing myself. Let me just start by saying I support the city council's approval of the seven-unit condo project at 10046 Bianchi Way. My support comes after reviewing the staff's comprehensive report, the planning commission's three-to-one approval, and the public comments and concerns. And I've also visited the site, uh, twice, in fact, today, just to gain a better understanding of what is being planned and how it might improve the community. In my view, on balance, the project will be a good addition for the local community in many ways after it is built, and it will be consistent with the city's greater need to add housing opportunities, including below-market-rate housing for Cupertino residents. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you, Glenn. Mayor, that was our final speaker for this item.
Okay. Thank you to all the speakers who spoke on this issue. Uh, I wanted to give the applicant, uh, a chance to, uh, comment on any of the points raised by the public. I'll give you two minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and, and council members and, and staff. Thank you so much. Um, one of the items that kept coming up, that continued to come up tonight was the, uh, I got a clock here, thank you, uh, the sidewalk. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware that the entire sidewalk for the full length of Bianchi Way will be reconstructed as brand-new again. Um, that is part of the development. So the, the apartment community that's to the south, that sidewalk that turns that radius corner at the cul-de-sac, that's going to be replaced as well. Um, the other one that came up quite a bit was the, uh, excuse me, the oak tree and the parking. You know, we discussed the parking. Uh, we believe that we are where, where we need to be in regards to the requirements for minimum and maximum from what we can provide. Uh, the oak tree, we're planting 10 new trees for the 10 that we remove. You heard from the Director of Operations at Union Church in reg- or, excuse me, United Church Church, in regards to the fact that the tree is causing a lot of damage to their property, to the hardscape, which I think we all understand it's the most expensive to fix. Um, so that by that tree being removed, with the intensity of the, of the development of this new project, that, that tree wasn't, it's not a natural tree to be in its location. The arborist believes that that tree was planted possibly by wildlife, bringing seeds of some sort way back in the day, and, and that, that big oak tree sprouted where it currently sits. Um, so we intend to try to make sure that we do all right by the arborist and by the city guidelines. We want to make sure that we provide trees that provide privacy and, um, and safety. I know one of the concerns was the grooming standards of, of the landscape, and, um, you can rest assured that the landscape of this new property is going to be maintained, uh, at a consistent level to what the city requires. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to thank the applicant and all, all the, the people who participated in the public comments process. Uh, let me bring it, uh, so I'm closing the, the public hearing and returning to, uh, our council for a motion and possible deliberations. Is there a motion? Vice Mayor Fruen?
So, for the sake of, uh, discussion, move the staff-recommended action.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Moore?
A second.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and let's, uh, deliberate and discuss. Uh, five minutes per council member. Would you like to start, Councilmember Way?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Mohan. Actually, I think we heard a lot of, uh, very extensive comments and also answers, and so I'm pretty satisfied with the, um, the, um, the questions that I had, but I have one more question. So on the replacement of the trees, I think we received a public comment that they're hoping that it's native trees, so I, I don't know how the city coordinated with the developers to pick trees. Would that be, uh, part of the criteria?
The applicant will be planting 10 trees, which, um, are a makeup of Jerusalem thorn, as well as, excuse me, um, the blue oaks. They are native trees, and they're, they're evergreen.
Wonderful. So one more question is, is this-
Excuse me, the Jerusalem thorn is not evergreen.
Uh, okay. So, is this a townhouse development? Do you, will you have a homeowner association?
Uh, that is, yes.
Okay. So, um, 'cause you, you heard today, the city council is deciding on reduced service, so the sidewalks are probably, or could be maintained by the homeowner association. So, um, just, just so that I know, there is a homeowner association that are going to take care of the sidewalks and the trees?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Should I stay here in case there's more questions? Yeah, probably a good idea. Okay.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Way. Uh, let's go to Councilmember Chow. Five minutes, please.
Okay. Thank you for choosing Cupertino to develop the project. I can tell that you're putting a lot of, uh, careful design in the project, and I wonder is, is there was concern about wheelchair access? So is there, uh, could you clarify, is there a way to- So is there, could you clarify, is there a way to improve the wheelchair access turned where it turns or ramps? So what's a consideration in your design?
And so right now, one of the concerns was the current state of the sidewalk as it is now in disrepair. And so already, we're going to go through the process of permits and review and getting the permit scheduled and approved for the project. Ultimately, that sidewalk will be brought up to ADA standards and code, which should alleviate any of those concerns in regards to accessibility per the guidelines of the ADA.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
A question, this is actually for a city attorney. I believe that Cupertino has a requirement of 15% minimum for below-market rate units, and the council approved the 20% minimum below-market rate for for-sale units. And these seven units are for-sale, but one out of seven is only a little over 14%. So it's not even above the minimum requirement of Cupertino. So why does the project qualify as density bonus? It doesn't even meet our own below-market rate standard.
So the units can count for both the city affordability requirements and density bonus affordability requirements per state law?
So for state law, what's the minimum percentage to qualify?
There's a sliding scale. I don't remember what the minimum percentage is.
Okay. Thank you. Cupertino, certainly, we need more housing, but we also set standards in place in our general plan, in our municipal code, so that each street has a setback, so that we don't have a street that's, all the buildings are pushed up to the street, or it's like zigzag the ugly street. But when the state law, as it stands now, allow the development, I'll buy it a good development, but it has to take six waivers plus other concessions, which means you are breaking the Cupertino city code with the project. I really like the project. I just don't like it when we, when the state has passed laws that allow the city code that many council members before me put in place in our general plan and municipal code, but they are not respected. But you are certainly allowed to do that because the state with very minimums density requirement makes, allow you to do that. So it's a very sad state of the California law right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, so I wanted to make sure with regards to the ADA compliance, that the angles of this proposed sidewalk, that that is consistent with ADA? Or would it need to perhaps have a, I'm not sure what your plan is, but to have a 45-degree angle and then move forward as you go south on Bianchi? Have you-
So currently, I don't, sorry, I don't know what year those sidewalks were put in. I do know that the standard changes every couple of years in regards to ADA complacency. If it's in disrepair, anything out of more than a half an inch of elevation change with any walking surface is considered out of ADA complacency. So if you've got tree roots that are causing some of these sidewalk flags to raise in certain spots, already the sidewalk would need to be redone. In regards to the angle and/or the approach as you're coming around the cul-de-sac and/or towards the north at Stevens Creek, ADA is very clear in regards to the direction that they give to contractors and developers when it relates to ADA. It's a law, it's, this is it, right? And some of the measurements they give you, it's within an eighth inch or 1/16 of an inch complacency. And so if you're over by 1/16, it doesn't comply. So understanding that and going through the building inspect, or the building plan review, which goes through an extensive ADA complacency review, the sidewalks will be put back in currently as they sit, but at ADA complacency. If there is a harder turn or 45 approach into one of the corners, that's going to be brought up during the design phase, during the plan check.
Okay, okay, thank you. And there are some look like bollards that are out on the street. What was the purpose of the city question? What was the purpose of those bollards? Why are they there?
Yeah, through the mayor, I believe the bollards are to allow for turnaround of wheelchair access. And also, too, as a part of the question, through the building permit review process, we'll make sure that ADA is complied with, as we do with all the projects. And the sidewalk here that's being proposed will be wider than the standard. So I believe the standard is 48 inches, something like that, and this is proposing to be 54. So it's going to be a little bit wider already.
Okay, thank you. I'm not happy with the displacement of the current residents, but I do understand the rationale within the staff report, the explanation there. So I appreciate that. I wish that they had been a part of the city's BMR program, then we would have had some more leverage on that item. There was a question from a member of the public regarding median and moderate income for the qualifying unit, and I believe it was median income unit is going to be built, not a moderate?
It's through the mayor. It'll be considered as a moderate income affordable unit.
Not median? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this chart that was handed to the, given to the city council, moderate income, if it was a family of three, am I reading this correctly, is $195,800?
For a qualifying income, that's correct. And that's, but the county will update that, so this is the information for, we'll receive the update soon. But yes, that is currently income, qualifying income for a family of three.
Okay, and then the household, the median, the median household income for Cupertino is, it's about $200,000. So this is actually really close. This moderate income is really close to what we're seeing in the city already. So I have a little bit of time. I would actually prefer that the affordability was much lower than this. This is really, it's not, it's not providing the income levels that I would like to see here at all. I wish that there was open space because these are large units. They look like they all have three bedrooms and a den, so you could have a number of kids there, and they don't have the open space to congregate and play unless you're going to include the driveway for all of these garages. And because of the proximity to the apartments, I do appreciate that you have stuck with a 30-foot height. However, I wish that there had been more density bonus units on the project and that it actually did get pushed up to the 45 feet, and the new residents would have, have open space to play. With regards to native trees, I prefer the word climate appropriate, so that we don't inadvertently cause some issues with disease. Okay, I'll leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Fruen?
To pick up on a point that Councilmember Moore raised, per the staff report, are any of the units in the existing development considered protected units under SB 330?
No, not per seized knowledge.
Okay, all right. You know, for the sake of everyone's recollection, SB 330 would provide for special treatment of low-income tenants pursuant to that law. It sounds like what we have here is mostly older housing stock that has, over time, become more affordable because it's less competitive. You know, with respect to some of the concerns that folks have over what our rules are and whether they're being respected, I just put out there, you know, the general plan is supposed to be updated from time to time to reflect existing economic reality. And it may be that if a lot of our standards are prohibitive and problematic, that that's the issue, not state law specifically. I certainly understand that the TBL can be frustrating to deal with if you want to create objective standards and have people abide by them, but it's important that we make sure that those are things that can actually result in buildable housing. And we've heard today that some of the reasons that we're not seeing additional units are just that there are some safety concerns, et cetera. So I'm pleased to be able to support this project today. I think it brings us a little bit closer to where we need to be. And also, just as one additional point, this is already being counted as a pipeline project, is it not, in the housing element?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we're already telling the state that we expect this project to get built?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I just want to follow with a couple of comments. The first is, I want to follow Vice Mayor Fruen's comment about our general plan. It really is a general plan that's a guiding light for us, but also should bring enough flexibility for us to really realistically look at what our city needs. And the second is, we have a lot of wish lists. I mean, you know, hoping that you can bring more units, hoping that you could have more affordable housing units. But I really want to say that this is a fairly good project that comes with a small land. This is not a big land. So, and I'm positive if you build 45 feet, even if you could, we're going to come and saying that, oh, you're building too tall, this is not going to be so. I am very pleased with the give and take. I understand when you design something, you have to give and take. So I do believe that this is a fairly good project for our city to have, and so that just my general comment, and I really, I really want to thank you for working with your neighbors and working with the city. I'm a firm believer that developers do not want to build something that the city or the residents really don't want. So you are a prime example that I believe that what development should come to Cupertino and to any city, even if it's a builder's remedy. I do believe that our staff can work with them to really bring them, say, hey, you want your project to be welcoming in our city instead of, you know, being people really don't want it. So I want to thank you for setting out a good example. We have lots of projects probably in the pipeline coming up with the housing elements. So I want to hope that this is one example, we're showing collaboration between a developer and our city staff and our residents and the neighbors. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Chow, I don't know how much time you have left.
I don't know. So thank you for providing the BMR units that's comparable in size to the market rate unit, and that's also our city requirement. You could have taken that as a waiver and provided a really tiny studio unit, but you did provide a big enough unit that would provide affordable housing for a family. So I'd like to thank you for that and acknowledge that. And, but for the voting, I like the project, I like your design, but in principle, I object the state law that allow a project to take unlimited number of waivers. In the past, the developer has taken maybe two waivers, now there are six. I, I wish I, I want to approve the project, but then in principle, I will be abstaining because to, for opposition for the broken state law. But I'd like to really thank you. You have brought us a really good project, and I would have really happy to approve if it complied with all of the objective standards we have in place in Cupertino. But it does not comply with our general plan and municipal code. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
Through the mayor, I have a question for the city attorney. Wouldn't we need to, if we were to deny this project, have, we would need to make findings that it was not in compliance, and I'm just not seeing that. Could you provide some advice on that?
Yeah, so you, yeah, so there would either have to be a failure to comply with an objective standard, you know, subject to the potential to waiving those standards under the density bonus law, as we've discussed. If you were not to make findings regarding that objective standard, you would need to identify a specific adverse impact to public health or safety, and for which there is no, you know, feasible method to mitigate that impact under the Housing Accountability Act to deny the project. So, and I believe that, you know, based on the staff analysis and the planning commission's conclusions, there are no such impacts present with this project.
And through the mayor, the constraining factor that I seem to see is that 30-foot, it's the height limitation through, because of other external factors that basically made it so that we need to accept many of these things with this project.
My understanding is the height limitation is essentially a fire code requirement, so.
Understood. All right. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Fruen?
Just as a general comment, again, you know, per the conversation that you just heard, our discretion here is severely constrained by state law, and I think it's really incumbent upon all of us to acknowledge that we have a duty to vote yes or no on such things. It's really not appropriate to put the burden on the rest of council to choose to say yes to something that we were required to do.
Councilmember Chow?
If I still have time?
Yeah. Very little time left.
So I'd like to clarify, the term compliant, the meaning of that has been changed by the state law. Before, compliant project means it complied with all the objective standards adopted by the city, the city law. But the state law has changed so that a project can break a limited number of city standards and still be called compliant in name because of this mere, a very small percentage requirement for below-market rate units, which does not even go beyond the minimum requirement by the city. So, yeah, I understand it's a compliant project. I understand we don't have discretion here to reject the project. The problem is not that. The problem is we have a broken state housing law, and that's what I'm objecting here. So I will be abstaining in protest.
Thank you, Councilmember Chow. I wanted to make a couple of comments. Instead of sort of going into the merits or demerits of the state law, I wanted to restrict my comments to the issue we have today, which is the development of 10046 Bianchi Way. I had the opportunity to view the property yesterday along with Danielle and Benjamin, and I got a pretty good explanation of the design and what you proposed to come up with for this. My, the concerns I had about parking, about wheelchair access, about tree removal, about privacy, all those questions have been answered adequately to my satisfaction. So I would definitely approve of this project. This is the kind of project we want to see for Cupertino. It is included in the housing element. It's a pipeline project. So nothing, there are no red flags as far as I'm concerned. Those are my comments. Since we've-
Sit back down. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you up there for hearing us tonight. The agenda is extremely important to us. The city of Cupertino is also important. It was stated that thank you for choosing Cupertino, which was an easy choice. The city staff, Danielle, has been fantastic to work with. And I did want to say to this young lady that goes to high school, you know, her presentation up here, although it be in approval, she was giving us, you know, her support, but just to hear her up here, you know, the guts and the gumshoe and the fact that, you know, she spoke so well, so eloquently about the project. So I just wanted to kind of give her a little bit of a high five. So thank you all.
Thank you very much. Let's vote by lights. Do we all know what the original motion is? Yes, yes, there is only one this time. Yes, please vote by lights.
The motion carries with Chow abstaining.
Thank you. Okay, should we take a short break? Five minutes? Okay, thank you. Let's get back at 9:21.